Everybody, welcome to the February 25th, no, February 11th, 2025 Bellevue City Council meeting. Before we begin, just want to tell you some words about attending and participating in meetings. Ask you not to disrupt the meeting. That means interrupting, laughing out loud, making comments. Also ask that, you know, we welcome public comment, but we just ask, and it's not hard for anybody here, to please be polite and not be disparaging. Don't use crude remarks or insults, but if you do, it's free speech and we can handle it. So with that, let's start with the roll call.
Thank you. Mayor Robinson?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Malakutian?
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Lee?
Here.
Councilmember Newenhouse?
Here.
Councilmember Stokes?
Here.
And Councilmembers on. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee, will you start with the flag salute, please?
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a proclamation tonight for Day of Action and Remembrance for Japanese-American Incarceration During World War II. And Councilmember Stokes is going to read that proclamation. And Sheldon Arakaki is going to receive it representing the Japanese-American Citizens League. So thank you, welcome. Go ahead, Councilmember.
Okay, thank you. Whereas, February 19th marks the anniversary of President Franklin D. Roosevelt signing Executive Order 9066 in 1942, which authorized the creation of military exclusion areas, leading to the forced removal and incarceration of Japanese-Americans on the West Coast during World War II. And whereas more than 120,000 Japanese-Americans, the majority of whom were American citizens or born in the United States, were uprooted from their homes, losing their communities, and enduring hardships at inter-inter-interment camps located in remote parts of the country. And whereas the consequences of this policy were profound and lasting, with families experiencing immense emotional trauma and financial devastation as they lost homes, businesses, property, and savings, and whereas the consequences of this policy was profound and lasting, with families experiencing immense emotional trauma and financial devastation as they lost homes, businesses, property, and savings, and whereas Japanese-American community was deeply impacted with only 11 of the 60 displaced Japanese-American families returning after the war. The United States government formally apologized for the interment policy in 1988, when President Ronald Reagan signed the Civil Liberties Act, offering survivors $20,000 each as redress and a symbolic gesture of atonement. And whereas Bellevue is home to Emerging Radiance, an interactive and immersive art experience which shares the stories and decay of farmers of Bellevue before and during, after World War II. And whereas the city of Bellevue values and honors the enduring contributions of Japanese-Americans to our city, it reaffirms the commitment to fostering an inclusive, equitable, and welcoming community for all. Now, therefore, I, John Stokes, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of Bellevue, Washington, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim February 19th, 2025, as Day of Action and Remembrance for Japanese-American Incarceration During World War II in Bellevue, and urge all members of our community to reflect on this dark chapter of our nation's history and help maintain a commitment to protecting the civil rights of everyone in our community.
And that's something we should remember every day. Thank you, Councilmembers. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Robinson, and thank you, Councilmember Stokes, and to the rest of the Bellevue City Council for taking a moment to recognize what happened 83 years ago, which upended the lives of some 120,000 Japanese, Japanese-Americans up and down the West Coast, including, as Councilmember Stokes stated, 60 farmer families in Bellevue. I would encourage you all, if you want to learn more, to visit the Bainbridge Island Exclusion Memorial at Eagle Harbor, because that was the site of the first forced removal. And when the Washington State Fair opens, there is the New Remembrance Gallery under the Puyallup Fairground Grand Side, which tells the story of the Puyallup Assembly Center, which was the immediate area gathering there before people were moved out to the concentration camps in Minidoka, Idaho, and Tululete, California. So thank you again for the recognition.
Thank you. Can we do a picture with you?
Yes.
Okay. We invite anybody who'd like to be in the picture.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. City Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for oral communications?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. There are three pre-registered speakers this evening, so before I start calling names, I'll go over a few of the rules that the council has in place. So the total time for oral communications is not to exceed 30 minutes, and all topics must relate to City of Bellevue government. People speaking to items on tonight's agenda will be called first, and then if time remains, people not speaking on items on tonight's agenda will be called. In both of those categories, the presiding officer is authorized to give preference to those who have not spoken to council within the last 60 days, or who will be speaking on topics that will come in front of the council within the next 60 days. Speakers are allowed to speak up to three minutes, and only three speakers are allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. And with that, I'll call our first speaker, who is Pamela Johnston, who I believe is joining us virtually. Ms. Johnston, can you hear me?
Can you hear me now?
We can. Your time begins now.
Okay. Thank you. I'm here to ask the Bellevue City Council to prohibit dual office holding and to ask Councilmembers on to resign from one of her offices. The council has the authority to prohibit a person from being eligible for the position of council member while they are holding any other elective office. Who is representing me? Genesee Son, dual roles as city council member and 41st District State Representative, raises concerns about divided allegiances, potential conflicts in interest. These concerns go beyond this case alone. This could happen at any time. Um, dual office holding. Son is serving as both a Bellevue council member and 45th District Representative. This leads to divided allegiances between the two constituencies. Bellevue council members cover Bellevue at large, but the 41st also covers places like Mercer Island, Newcastle, Iskwa, Samamish, and Southern Bellevue. There are legal and ethical questions regarding compatibility of holding both offices, as it could lead to conflicts of interest and concentration of power, especially given her roles, the committee as House Assistant Majority Whip. Uncertainty and public policy. Despite the legal allowance of holding both offices indefinitely, the situation raises public policy concerns for the proper representation of constituents and the potential of one office to have power over the other, especially in her role as a local government committee. Please take this time to make a dual office holding prohibited by Bellevue City Council members. Thank you.
The next speaker on our list is Christopher Randles, who is also joining us virtually. Mr. Randles, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
We can. Your time begins now.
Excellent. Good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, councilmembers and staff. Chris Randles of Complete Streets Bellevue, speaking with strong support of the Rapid Ride K line, which will provide fast, frequent, and reliable transit for thousands of Eastsiders when service begins in 2030. You've heard of us before on this topic, and tonight's really no different. We've submitted a joint letter in tandem with three new organizations like Eastside Urbanism and Livable Kirkland to support all of the lines proposed speed, reliability, and accessibility improvements. I hope you all have had a chance to take a look at that, so I'd like to take my time tonight to address a few contextual points that can hopefully inform your discussion and questions you may have this evening. First, on that speed and reliability front, I'd really just like to emphasize our strong support for all the projects proposed. Tonight is likely going to present an opportunity to get down to brass tacks and discuss those products in more precise detail. And King County Metro staff have been incredibly helpful in preparing some detailed information on model impacts to different modes of travel. One thing reflected in staff's memo, but not in the presentation that we'd like to be kept in mind, is that these are model projections for 2044. Traffic modeling is an incredibly helpful industry tool to approximate conditions and estimate trade-offs, but it's really important to note that models are not gospel. And in running them, staff has not found the crystal ball that will tell us precisely how many people will drive on which street it's 19 years from now. Part of the speed planning that I work for you tonight is to shape the conditions that impact future results. And we know from countless case studies in cities that more people will take transit and make transit better. More people taking transit means less congestion, less pollution, safer streets, and a better mobility system for everyone. Please trust the experts who have the years of experience and a litany of data, including some from right here in King County, that shows that this works. As an ordinary stakeholders that like to get into the wonky, gritty, nerdy details of transit planning, looking at future projections and planning and protection for riders five years from now is incredibly exciting, but the experiences of current transit riders matter, too. Routes like the Rapid Ride Blue Line, 271, and 245 are already relied on by thousands of Eastsiders every day, and these buses also get stuck in traffic today. For Metro's own outreach, we know nearly 70% of people would ride transit more often if it was faster. Every person who gets to take transit is one fewer car in our streets. And conveniently, Bellevue already has a library of products from its Transit Master Plan that would help bring more people to transit by making it a more consistent and reliable experience. City of Bellevue's wealth has the resources necessary to begin the study, design, and construction of a small selection of these projects with urgency. Facilities can be deployed rapidly through pilot projects, collecting real-time data on traffic and ridership dynamics. We take advantage of our talented staff, their great work, and our immense resources. We can make sure that when the K line comes online in 2030, it's helped out by a city that made the choice to prioritize the equitable and sustainable mobility that transit provides. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final pre-registered speaker on the list tonight is Alex Zimmerman.
After this, Mayor Robinson will make me criminal. Zihai, my lovely Nazi Gestapo fascist hunter pig. Yeah. My name, Alex Zimmerman. Last time I spoke about school, because I have experience with Bellevue School, with another school for many years, yeah, go to board meeting, you know what it's meaning. Right now, I won't speak about, because my President Trump right now won't stop in this totally. It's absolutely right. What has happened with our school is a nightmare. So, I come to Bellevue School first time many years ago, but right now, a few years ago, like three, four times, four years ago, I come first time, and I start speaking, they cut me out, and give me trespass for one year. No problem. After one year, I come again.
Abram, what does this have to do with Bellevue City Council?
Okay. You want, what does I talk about council? No problem. When you, Mayor Robinson, stop and acting like a dirty, crazy female dog. Can you explain to me? It's open meeting, and you're doing this. Why you interrupt me? It don't have sense. I can speak about everything. The school very important, and exactly when President Trump right now want destroys this department totally in federal buildings.
Okay, let's keep it directed to what the City Council has purview over, or the city of Bellevue.
Why you interrupt me? My time.
The Bellevue School District is a separate entity.
You want to talk, talk to your time. Why you talk to my time? You doing this dirty trick every meeting.
If you want to talk about the Bellevue School District, do it at the Bellevue School District Board meeting.
Okay, I can speak about Japanese for one minute. Can I doing this? So I want to explain to you about Japanese, what has happened 33 ago. So, number one, Japan, German Nazi, Hitler, and...
You know what? We're having trouble having Abram stick to policies that have to do with the...
Time coming. Why you doing this? Give me chance, I want to speak about Japan. You have to do about Japan.
You either, you either talk about something that has to do with the Bellevue City Council...
It's a Bellevue, you're talking today about Japanese.
Or you stop.
I want to speak about Japanese. You, what is, you see? You cut my time. You dirty freaking Nazi pig. You acting like a dirty crazy dog. You know what it's mean? You doing this special time. I told you, you want talking to me? Talk to your time. You cut me right now. You don't give me chance speak. You are real Nazi pig. And Trump, talk about freedom of speech, executive order right now. You are real Nazi, dirty crook. Exactly. Why you talking? Vive Trump, vive America. It's a nightmare. And I feel us talking about school again and again.
Your time is up.
That is the end of our pre-registered list, so I'd ask if there's anyone else joining us this evening who would like to make a comment to the council in person or online?
Okay, you're disrupting the meeting, Abram, and I told you that last week when you disrupted the meeting. So that's twice, that's two weeks in a row. So I don't know how much more we need to ban you from our meetings, but I'm going to find out. Sorry.
Mayor, I do not see any additional hands. I'll pass it back to you.
Okay, thank you. So we have a written report from the Parks Board in our packet, and it's a great report. I encourage you to read it. And next up, we have the reporter, City Manager, Ms. Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and councilmembers. We do have a written report, or a report from our Utilities Director, Lucy Liu, and while she's coming up, I wanted to also take a moment to express some thanks for our streets team, which is a one-city team, right? It's led by transportation, but utilities, parks, and our finance and asset management staff also participate in the work to keep our streets free of snow and ice. And in the event last week, they spent eight days, 24 hours a day, working to adjust to what was a very unique storm event, which came and went, and came and went. And they stood down on Sunday, but I'm very thankful to their really great work to help make sure that the public and our first responders were able to travel our streets safely. And so, thanks to all of them for that work. And now, we have a couple of items on your consent agenda that we asked Lucy Liu, our Utilities Director, to speak to today. It's a little bit of just normal utilities business, but we wanted to give her an opportunity to explain that to both the council and the public. So, Lucy?
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. There are three items on tonight's consent calendar for your consideration that pertain to the day-to-day administration of the Utilities Department. And specifically, these include a new updated franchise agreement with the town of Europoint, an amendment to the water rate ordinance, and an amendment to the sewer rate ordinance. And I just want to provide a little more information for your information. So just as background, the Utilities Department provides water and sewer services to about 37,000 customer accounts within the city of Bellevue and the neighboring points communities, including the town of Europoint. To provide water and sewer services, we use public roads and land, or what's called right-ofways, to install water and store infrastructure. And when we use the right-ofway that's owned by another city or a town, we need permission through a franchise agreement. And a franchise agreement is essentially a contract that spells out the rules of how we can use that right-ofway. These agreements have not been updated in many years, and so some important modern provisions are missing from them. The current agreement with the town of Europoint is from 1994 and needs some updates. And so these updates will include emergency response procedures, process for removing and relocating facilities, better coordination of projects in order to minimize disruptions to the community, and better run rules for collecting franchise fees and taxes. And so tonight, City Council will review a new agreement that includes these updates. In addition to that, city rate ordinances already allow for changes to utility rates if a town increases or decreases the franchise fees that we pay to use the public right-ofway. But the current ordinances do not speak to the excise taxes that we pay. And so City Council will also review a proposed change that would allow the Utilities Department to adjust utility rates when excise taxes go up or down, just like they do for franchise fees. So what does this mean for our customers? There is no change to the current water or sewer rate structure. There are no extra costs for the city of Bellevue or the Utilities Department, because franchise fees and utility taxes are passed due to the customers that are located in that community. And you can find more information on these items in the agenda memos tonight.
Great. Thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
All right, is that it, City Managers?
And do that seem to the ring for part?
Okay. So, and with that, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oops. Okay, good. All right, so we have two study session items. Ms. Carlson, I'll let you introduce them.
Thank you, Mayor. This first study session item is an update and an overview of the county's proposed Medic One Emergency Medical Service, or EMS, levy renewal. We have an existing six-year levy that expires in December of this year, so prior to placing it on the ballot, the November 2025 ballot, the county is seeking approval from necessary jurisdictions. Those are over 50,000 in population. So we are joined by our Battalion Chief Matt Burrow from the Fire Department, and Fire Chief Jay Hagan is here as well. And then from the county, I'm very happy to have, be joined by our Director of King County Emergency Medical Services, Michelle Plord, who I've worked with in the past. We're thankful that you're here. Thank you. To give a little overview of the intergovernmental context of all of the work that went into the presentation tonight and the recommendation, I'm going to ask our Deputy City Manager, Janicee Atkins, to provide a little background for you. Janicee?
Thank you, City Manager. It's my pleasure to tee up this study session, and welcome our guests from King County this evening. King County EMS facilitated a year-long process in 2024 that took a comprehensive look at the levies coming renewal, both through the lens of the communities that it serves, as well as the frontline personnel who deliver those lifesaving services every day, day in and day out, across our county and within our city. We were proud that Mayor Robinson not only participated on the city's behalf, but also served as the Chair of one of the subcommittees. It was a significant body of work for our fire staff and for our intergovernmental team, but it was worth it to feel fully invested in its outcomes this evening. Without further ado, I will hand it over to our first presenter, Michelle Plord from King County. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Michelle Plord, EMS Division Director, and I want to thank you for allowing me to come here and share some of our findings from this process. It's important to make sure that we have our services uninterrupted during this period. And so we gathered together all the regional partners to come and help with this process, including Mayor Robinson, and thank you for that. I have some slides to share with you that are going to give an overview of what Medic One and why it's so important to our community, but also some details about what came out of that task force process. In addition, my colleague, Chief Burrow, is going to go over the specific information that pertains to the city of Bellevue, and so we will hopefully have some time to answer any questions that you might have. I might go through this a little fast, but bear in mind that I want to keep to the timeline that I've been given. So thank you so much. So, why are we here? Well, the current six-year levy is expiring at the end of this year, and so that prompted our regional leaders to come together and figure out, what are we going to do? What are our regional programmatic and financial plans that will allow for that to continue into the next levy period? This also, and I stressed, is a regional process, and it allowed everyone to come together and say, hey, what are some of the concerns that we have? Raise any issues that local communities have, and then come to consensus about how to move forward. That was a really important part of this process. In order to place the EMS levy on the ballot, it's required that all, 75% of all the cities over 50,000 in population have to approve putting it on the ballot. So in our case, that's nine out of the 11 cities in King County. It also requires approval from the King County Council. So what is Medic One EMS, and why is it important to us? Well, anytime you call for a medical emergency on dial 911, you're using our Medic One EMS system. We are known worldwide for our excellence and our innovation, and we regularly host people coming from all over the world to say, what, how do you do this? We serve over 2.3 million people, and on average, every two minutes, we go to a call. In addition, in 2024, we responded to over 255,000 calls in our community. And again, in 2023, our survival rate for cardiac arrest, which is what most systems use for EMS as a gold standard, and our survival rate was 51% in our region. And because of this strong program, cardiac arrest victims in our community are more likely, are two to three times more likely to survive compared to other cities. We're really proud of that fact. So what happens when you dial 911? Well, anyone who's experiencing a medical emergency can call and get connected to one of the four comm centers that are in our community. The telecommunicators who answer those calls are really important to our system, and the reason is because they need to very rapidly ask questions and decide whether the, one of the 23 BLS agencies or basic life support agencies staffed by emergency medical technicians or EMTs need to go, or if it's more life-threatening, whether an additional highly skilled paramedic a... additional highly skilled paramedic, a from one of the five ALS programs, or advanced life support programs, needs to also come. That describes our tiered system, and you'll see that that's an important component of what makes us really unusual. Our paramedics get 2,500 hours of training up at Harborview, and we want them to use those skills on the most important cases, not everyone. So why does our system work so well? Well, there's a couple components that I want to share with you. I've talked about it already, that we're regional, and we believe that we're better than, together than the sum of our parts. We also are a tiered system, and it's medically based, so that when we're calibrating the, when the paramedics go, we use science and medicine to make sure that we're getting it right. The other piece, and we've talked about it, I heard the council talk about it earlier today, we are equity-driven. We want to make sure that every person in our community gets the same high level of service that they need and that they deserve. We also want to use innovative strategies, whether we're using a pilot to go check out a new medical device or new medicines, making sure that we are cutting-edge in what we do and that we're serving our folks the best that we can. And then lastly, we want, we are funded by an EMS levy. And it's proven in good times and in the difficult times to be really stable and reliable. So some of the other considerations they had while we were deliberating on what to do is that we have noticed that, not noticed, we collect the data and we know that our population is growing. Now, there's not a one-to-one correlation between population growth and our call volumes, but we know that it's an important point. But I also like this slide because it shows the variation in our community. Some places are feeling that population a little bit more than others, and we want to be aware that we're including that in our deliberations. You can see here quickly that, you can see the gray bars, there's the increase in population, steady as it goes. You can see in 2020 that there was a drop in calls, and we all know why. And COVID impacted everybody, and including emergency medical services. But one thing of note is that for our BLS layer or tier, had a rapid increase of calls unlike before. And luckily, it's sort of plateauing out a bit in the last couple of years, and we're happy about that. Little bit less of an impact on ALS, but we track this regularly and make sure that we're responding and flexible in our service, in our understanding of our service. Oh, went too, a little too fast. One of the other things that we track is our response times for both ALS and BLS. And you can see during the last six years, even despite COVID, that we had steady response times on both of those tiers. And that speaks to the resiliency of our program as well as the capacity, and that was an important factor that we looked at. So one of the things that we also are noticing, and I know that you're aware of this as well, is the increased diversity in our community. So on the left is showing the increased growth between 2010 and 2020 of our communities of color, particularly Asian and Hispanic communities. And on the right, you see the increased proportion of folks who do not speak English as of, or, sorry, born outside the U.S., it's increasing as well. So we're taking these things into consideration. I gave you a little sneak peek at the next slide, which is the multilingualism across the county. And you can see there, again, there's variability, and we want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the community that we serve. So what do we do when we're starting to plan for our future strategic plan? Well, we need to identify our program needs, a financial plan to support those needs, sufficient reserves in case, because we have to plan out through a six-year period. And then the last piece is to recommend a levy length, a rate, and the ballot timing. One point that I want to make is that regarding the city of Seattle, since the beginning of a regional EMS levy in 1979, Seattle has collected and overseen the administration of the taxes collected in their jurisdiction. The remainder outside the city of Seattle, we collect the funds, and then we distribute it out to the agencies based on agreed-upon formulas. So when I'm going to talk about those recommendations, you'll know that that's in the balance of outside-of-city Seattle. But the total dollar amounts, the financial amounts, will include the entire county, including the city of Seattle. So before we go forward into the next levy period that we're planning for, I want to ground you on what is existing right now. We're currently in a six-year levy. We had a starting rate of 26.5 cents per $1,000 assessed value. That was expected to raise about 1.1 billion over the six years, including the Seattle and King County portion. But in the outside-city Seattle, what do those funds go to? Fully funding the advanced life support or the paramedic program, partial contribution to the BLS or the EMT firefighter programs, full funding for the regional services and strategic initiatives, and the reserves to support that program. The average cost to a homeowner in 2020 was $193 a year. That was based on a $730,000 home, which was the median price in 2020. So now that you're grounded in that, we spoke to already about this EMS Advisory Task Force that oversaw this program. And there were 20 elected officials representing the 50, the 11 cities over 50,000 in population, sound cities, fire commissioners, and King County Council. It was chaired by the Exec's Office, and again, we had four subcommittees lining up with each of those program areas that I mentioned, in addition to financial overview. One thing that was important to us is that we were able to bring subject matter expertise to each of those programmatic areas to help make those decisions. So I'm going to get into the task force recommendations. I wrote the word key up there because there are some small recommendations that were really technical in nature, so I'm going to highlight the ones that are, the real main ones. When it comes to the ALS Subcommittee recommendations, they supported continuing with the ALS allocation increase by CPI W plus 1%. They also recommended including a placeholder. There was no sign that we needed additional services at this time, but six years is a long time, and we wanted to make sure that we had a placeholder. They also recommended continuing using reserves and contingencies to cover any costs that might fall outside that allocation. So for the BLS Subcommittee recommendations, they recommended increasing the total funding, annual funding, starting at 5 million, split between a base allocation at 3 million, and also programmed to 2 million to support mobile integrated health, which I know is a popular program here in Bellevue. They also recommended increasing CPI W and 1%, and also adjusting slightly the BLS funding formula to 60% call volume and 40% AV. The final recommendation was to support the mental wellness and equity inclusion efforts proposed by the King County Fire Chiefs Association. So the final programmatic Subcommittee was the Regional Services and Strategic Initiatives Subcommittee. They recommended continuing delivering the services that we already have established, but in addition, enhancing two specific areas. One is initial EMT training due to increased staffing needs and training of new folks, and then also renewing and enhancing the telephone referral program, which helps reduce the impact on BLS response. The final recommendation was to maintain both the Community-Based Partnerships Echo Program, as well as the Data System Improvements Prime Program, and then to support the new strategic initiative, which would help support technical improvements for emergency medical So this is a slide that shares the proportion of those programs that I described. You can see that the majority goes to the Advanced Life Support or ALS Paramedic Program, followed by Basic Life Support, Regional Services, and Initiatives. On the right-hand side, you can see the total dollar amounts for each of those programs. And again, this is on the King County side of coming total for a six-year period of 919 million. So then we get to the Financial Subcommittee, and thank you again, Mayor Robinson, for your excellent oversight of this committee. They recommended two things. One is to conduct a risk analysis to determine the reserve amounts and what kind of risk we might see during this levy period. And then the second recommendation was to provide adequate reserves and contingencies to mitigate any of those risks. It was a tricky endeavor. So some of the main drivers on the revenue side are, again, assessed value, projections of new construction, what's going to be the split over the next six years between Seattle and King County. And then a very important fine point, but I like to include it, is what are the amount of reserves that we are able to carry forward from this levy period and buy down the future levy period? The main drivers on the expenditure side include how many units we have, what does it cost for those paramedic units, any inflators, and how those are projected out, and the addition of any new services and funding. And of course, then, there's the estimated reserves and contingencies to take into consideration. So the Office of OIFA, the county, conducted this what-if scenario. And you can see there that they selected both the AV, new construction, Seattle AV ratio with the King County, and inflation as the three areas to conduct risk. The individualized bars there are to show the least worst and the worst worst case for each of those items. But I want to note, down at the bottom, you can see the six-year total of the least, that's the cumulative for all of those risks. And those are important number to see in the next couple of slides. The range is from 31.8 to 76.9 million. So when we wrap all these things together and these considerations, you can see that from our total expenditures, now this is including the city of Seattle, at 1.4 billion with a little, more than 1.4 billion. The reserves for programmatic and rainy day that's required by the county is 67.7 for a total expenditure package of $1.5 billion. Now, we were able to carry over 64.4 out of this current levy period. King County also has some additional revenues, mainly interest at 17. And so, at a 25-cent levy rate, which will raise $1.47 billion, we're able to get a total revenue package of $1.55 billion and have 47 million set aside for these supplemental reserves. And if you can see the numbers at the bottom, the range again is 31 to 8, 31.8 to 76.9, and 47 hits right in the middle. And the Subcommittee thought that that was a nice place to land in terms of the supplemental reserves. This next slide will share with you the split between King County and Seattle. You can see that Seattle gets 518.9 million of that total package. And then the final recommendation by the Subcommittee was to move forward with this plan as outlined and explained to you. And so, in summary, the EMS Advisory Task Force supported the Subcommittee programmatic recommendations. They supported the financial plan, which would start at a levy rate of 25 cents. The annual cost to the homeowner for an $850,000 home would be $212 at this time. They also recommended a six-year levy, which would cover the span of 2026 to 2031. And they also recommended putting the ballot on the November 2025 general election. So those are the end of my slides, and I'm going to pass it over to Chief Burrow.
Thanks, Michelle. Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakudian, members of council, City Manager Carlson, good evening. Here we go. For those that I have not met in person, my name's Matt Burrow. I'm the EMS Division Battalion Chief and happy to be here to be able to present this to you. We're going to be more, my presentation will be more Bellevue-specific and just kind of ground why we're here. Staff is seeking a direction to bring a resolution on a future consent calendar, supporting, placing the proposed 2026 through 2031 King County Emergency Medical Services levy on the November ballot in 2025. Agenda will be, again, Bellevue-specific. We're going to go over some generic EMS background, the proposed levy funding, as well as the allocation changes from the proposed levy. Bellevue is one of five agencies in King County that has a paramedic program. This is an advanced life safety, or ALS, and it's been a longstanding service we've provided since the early '70s. That's over 50 years that we provide our ALS services to our community. Of the 27 county medic units, four reside with Bellevue Fire. We've got two in-city and two out-east. Currently, one is at Overlake Hospital, which will relocate to Station 10 upon opening. We have one at Fire Station 2 in East Gate. We have one at Fire Station 73 in the Esqwa Highlands, hosted by Eastside Fire and Rescue. And then we're further out-east at, in North Bend, at Station 87, again, with Eastside Fire and Rescue. The King County Medic Program operates on a regional platform, and our medics have a much larger footprint than just the city of Bellevue. Our medics provide ALS services to Bellevue proper, our six contract cities, and Mercer Island, all the way to the pass along I-90. We have over 300 square miles that we provide ALS services for. And in addition to that, we dip our toes into some mutual aid into Kittitas County, Rincon, Kirkland, and Redmond. All of our firefighters are trained as EMTs. And under the levy provisions, we're able to support our EMT ongoing training, as well as our initial EMT training for our new hires. Our new hires go through a six-week intensive program to earn their EMT certificate prior going to the Fire Academy. Our medics are also, were once, were EMT firefighters. And those selected to attend paramedic training do so at a King County-approved program. This is a world-renowned, one-year paramedic training program that operates on a three-legged platform. University of Washington School of Medicine, it's, that's where we get our instruction and hospital access. Seattle Fire Department Medic One Program, that's partner with all of the students, running hundreds of calls reinforcing skills, and the sponsoring agency. That's us supporting our members through the training. I want to highlight CARES. CARES is a program that we offer, and this is an outcome of prior levies. CARES is our Mobile Integrated Health, or MIH, program that stands for Community Advocates for Referral and Education Services. This has grown over the past two levies, from a part-time employee to over several MHPs or mental health provider, masters of social work. That is really one of our city's legacy services that provide, is provided, focusing on vulnerable populations and those needing mental and behavioral health resources. As mentioned by Michelle, our ALS program is fully funded from the EMS levy and has been so for prior levies. Not a single patient transported by our medics sees a bill from us. The Bellevue-specific funding from this levy is going to, for our ALS funding, will be approximately just over $4 million per medic unit. So that works out to be $16.2 million for all four medic units for 2026. The estimated funding for our BLS funding will be 6.1 million. Our BLS funding is not intended to cover all of the BLS costs. We have some other drivers to help supplement that, but rather assist in raising costs, in the rising costs of equipment, training, and supplies. And I will note that of the 6.1 million, about, almost 1.2 million will be directed towards our MIH program. While other programs around the nation is challenged with reducing services, the levy proposal focuses on maintaining the exceptional public service we provide under our EMS services we, to our communities. The King County EMS levy has been a stable and secure funding source for our department, representing roughly 22% of our annual budget. Our ALS allocation will increase to 986, increased by $986,000, which is a 6.5 increase. Our BLS allocation increases to just over $500,000, which is a 9.1% increase, which will include 300, just about $330,000 for MIH. The proposed rate of 25 cents per $1,000 of assessed value for an average, average home of $1 million in Bellevue, our Bellevue taxpayers can expect to pay $250 per year for EMS services, which is an increase of approximately $30 per year over the existing levy. Our current levy that we're in, 2020 through 2025, expires at the end of the year. The approximate allocations we've received is, in total, is $107 million. The approximate allocations we've received in total is $107 million. 79 million goes towards our ALS funding, and 27.9 is towards our BLS funding, which is about 4.4 for our MIH services. In closing, the King County Task Force unanimously supported the proposed levy put forth by the subcommittees. Our regional medic service is truly is world-class, and it's an honor to host a portion of the system in Bellevue with our ALS system. Our excellent emergency medical services we provide to the community, be it ALS, Advanced Life Safety, or Basic Life Support, Mobile Integrated Health, much in part is from the resources received from the King County EMS levy. And again, staff is seeking direction to bring a resolution on a future consent calendar supporting placing the proposed 2026 through 2031 King County EMS levy on the November ballot this fall. Thank you for your time. And Mayor, I turn it over to you for any questions you guys might have, or anything you might want to add from your experience last year with your involvement.
Okay, thank you so much. Just to clarify, we're only talking about whether or not this goes on the ballot, not whether we'd be voting for it once it's on the ballot.
Absolutely.
So, I know you know that. I'm just telling my colleagues that we're just talking about whether or not this even goes on the ballot. I was fortunate to be part of this process and see the kind of inside thought process and all the data. And I was so impressed with the representation at these meetings. We had all our providers at the meeting, the chiefs, the people who have their feet on their boots on the ground. And it's very clear that there's a need for additional funding to serve the needs of our community. And Michelle, you said it so well, meeting the needs of the community we are trying to serve. So it's actually a pretty moderate recommendation. And so I was, I'm just talking about the process. For me, I was impressed with the recommendation that came forward. It could have been far more, but it was well-thought-out, and recommendation is very moderate. So I'm going to be very supportive of seeing this go on the ballot, and I just appreciate all the work that you did to guide this process and all those who participated. So are there any, let's start with a motion, Deputy Mayor.
I move to direct staff to prepare a resolution supporting placement of proposed renewal of six-year King County Medic One EMS levy on the November 2025 ballot and bring it back for final action on city council's consent agenda following introduction of ordinance by King County.
Second.
Are there any comments or questions from the council? Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Lee, we'll start with you. And is that a yes from you two? Okay.
Thank you. Generally speaking, you know, it's a regional project and a regional effort, and I think I support this regional approach, as so ably presented the benefits that we've been getting for many, many, many years. But I do have a couple of questions. Starting off with the last one that the mayor mentioned about the city council supporting it, or to agree to put on the ballot, can the city of Bellevue actually prevent it from putting it on the ballot?
Well, I can answer that. It is only required to get nine out of the 11. So you're our first presentation, so I have a few more ahead of me. So we're hoping that we can get those nine out of the 11. But it changed recently in the last levy period to go from 100% of all cities must require approval before we could put it on the ballot. It's now down to 75%.
Yeah, that's why I was, I remember that, yeah. I don't think we necessarily, we have to, but regardless, I support it. I just was curious. So it's not that crucial, but it is.
Well, it is, because if we're one of three that vote not to put it on the ballot, it doesn't go on the ballot.
We don't know that, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's not crucial. We don't have, but that's beside the point. But I'm just wanting to be clear, not just because we were against it, it's going to be off the ballot, no.
If two other cities join us in that, it will be off the ballot.
Well, but that's the whole statement, not that if we still support it, it will not be on the ballot. Okay, so.
Okay.
I think we understand. I understand it. The second question I have is, you mentioned about diversity because of the region has become more diverse, particularly those cities like Bellevue, we've become very diverse. So what are we doing, what are you doing to address this diversity, language barrier, and what a situation?
Well, I like to share it as there isn't any one person or entity that is going to figure out how to serve the community. So one of the things that we do and why we were so insistent on having all the fire departments participate in this process is because they're the ones that have the closest connection with their community. So I operate at the EMS Division level, at a regional level, and we do have some programs that are regional. For example, I mentioned one of the Echo Program, which is a partnership that we have at the regional level with community organizations that represent different communities and say, hey, how can we better serve you? And some of those have been with the Somali Health Board or with the Chinese Information Service Center, who represents more than just the Chinese community. So we have that at the level of when to call, what to prepare for when people come, so that it's an engaging process. The other aspect of it is that fire departments also have programs that connect with community. The other aspect of that is that we're doing, and this is one of the initiatives from the King County Fire Chiefs, is to make our workforce look more like our community. And so they're engaging. We have a regular recruitment workshops, inviting people to understand how to apply, how to prepare yourself, what to expect, and so we do those as well. So there are a number of different approaches, and those are just a couple of the examples.
One of those workshops we'll be hosting next month, or in April, Future Women in the Fire Service and EMS, and we'll be hosting at the Training Center for a weekend.
Very good. I appreciate that. Expect that, you know, what we have programs. But by saying that, I assume we have metrics to check the progress, right? The result we're getting.
Yes, absolutely.
So it'd be nice to have some progress report over time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I support it.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Appreciate you being here. Chief Hagan as well, and I know we have some of our outstanding members of the Bellevue Fire Department here as well. Thank you to the mayor for her great work on the EMS Advisory Task Force. The regional approach to providing emergency medical care ensures that community members here in Bellevue get the best possible care and that the financial burden of providing that care is spread across the county. There was a major fire in my neighborhood just this last Sunday. The response from our fire department was swift and substantial. Right behind them were fire crews from Redmond and Kirkland and the Medic One Unit. So the fire was just over the border in Redmond. So when they arrived on scene, they took charge of the situation, did a fantastic job. Thankfully, nobody was hurt, but we do have a family in my neighborhood at least that really is suffering now in very difficult times. But just going through that, I was out on a walk with my wife. We walked past the fire. We saw what was going on. It certainly brought home the importance of this EMS levy and the benefits that we derive from it were in clear view, and drove home the importance of working cooperatively with neighboring jurisdictions when emergencies occur. I appreciate the Basic Life Support Subcommittee and the King County Fire Chiefs Association's continued support for mental wellness and diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts that are supported by the levy. Also want to mention, as has already been said, but our Mobile Integrated Health Program, the CARES Program, receives critical funding through the EMS levy. And the crisis response and ongoing case management service, services that our CARES team delivers is highly valued in our community. So ensuring that our CARES team remains fully funded is a top priority. So certainly 100% in favor of moving this forward. It's clear it's something we need, and I think the community really expects that we do this. So, ready to move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Newenhoss.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Member, Councilmember Hamilton, for covering all of my talking points. I appreciate it. But I would, I wanted to call out all the same folks. So I won't repeat it, but thank you all for being here. It's great. Thank you, Michelle, and Chief Burrow there for your great presentation this evening. It's rare that I don't have questions, but when I do, it usually shows that I feel very comfortable in terms of where we're at, also knowing that residents, number-one priority every single time, public safety. And I think part of my comfort with this too is just the fact that I feel like this levy has been so well-managed, transparent. Appreciate Mayor Robinson's leadership on this as well, but just have a great sense of comfort in terms of where the money's going, how it's being used, how it impacts Bellevue. So that just very methodical way of going about this just makes it an automatic no-brainer for me. Let's support, let's get this on the ballot right now. You know, my only caveat is that since the door's been pushed open just slightly, that maybe we should increase this levy because it is so moderate, but I won't.
We actually talked about that.
I'm sure you did. But no, I'm very happy, I want to move this forward, get this on the ballot right now. So again, just want to really appreciate your process, the presentation tonight, and feel very confident, as every resident in this city should, about getting the service that they need when they need it most, no matter where it is. And we've said it so many times before, if you're going to have a cardiac arrest incident, Bellevue is one of the best places to do it. Please, no one take me seriously on that, and don't let that happen. But we've just got some of the finest individuals representing our fire department, and this is going to give them, you know, more tools and accessibility and resources to do even a finer job than they're already doing today. So thank you so much, really appreciate it.
And I can attest to what you just said. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, Mayor, thank you so much. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Chief Burrow, and hey, Chief, sitting on the back, and all of our medic people here, and all of those people who were involved in this whole process. Thank you, Mayor, for being involved and all of your recommendation. I am also in full support. I just have one question that you don't need to answer, or some maybe recommendation. Is there any specific and quantifiable data that we can show the impact of this current EMS levy on Bellevue resident or in King County resident? I can give some example, like how many number of lives saved because of this EMS response time? Or how much reduction in hospital rates that we have because the patients treated by EMS? Or kind of, is there any satisfaction number that we get from our resident? I think this will help to get the message across. And I think the follow-up to this, is there any quantifiable, quantifiable impact data is available? It's kind of the follow-up to the next question, is that are we going to be able to have a performance metric measurement for the next one? That we can track the effectiveness of these levy funds and ensure that we are providing for our residents that amazing service that we are saying we did in the last levy, and we are going to increase that effectiveness to the next levy? So that's kind of my two recommendation, to see some data, and maybe if we don't have those, are we going to do that for the next levy?
Well, you asked a great question. We have so much data. We require all the fire departments to send us their information so that our staff, and that's one of our sections within the EMS Division, our data analysts, making sure that we get all the data, that it's accurate and complete, and then we push out constantly measures. And so in our annual report on one of the appendices, we as a region came together and said, how are we going to, as a group, decide what we're going to be held accountable to? One of the measures I know that we do regularly is the cardiac arrest survival percentage, but we also say how many people were involved. And I can't remember if it's last year or the year before, but there were 288 people who had a cardiac arrest, were clinically dead, that were able to now live, got out of the hospital, unimpaired. And so those 288 people, we're very grateful, and we remain in that same range year after year. And we're always striving to make it even higher. We also have, we also measure, for example, what's our bystander CPR percentage, because we have one of the highest reported CPR training in the community. And so I think the last, whether it's 74 or 76% of our cardiac arrests have somebody in the community that started CPR. We also have a telephone referral program, telephone, telephone-assisted CPR for the dispatchers who ask anybody who's calling on a cardiac arrest. So we measure so many things, and I would be happy to share some of that information because it really is important to us. And I really appreciate you asking that because we need to be accountable to the people in our community.
Thank you. And I don't think for this body, but other aides, if you have one slide that talks about this, I think it's going to encourage them to know how amazingly you are tracking the impact of this levy for the residents of the King County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion, and it's been seconded. Are we ready to vote? Did you want to say something, Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Want to turn your microphone in? There you go.
Yeah, thank you very much. Yeah, I really enjoyed listening to Councilmember Hamilton and his well-laid-out comments about the value and success of our firefighters and also the firefighters' community and our well-served residents. I mean, it's a collaborative effort, really. And the other thing is really, I think, when you go out and look at places around the world and places here and in Washington and our area, we have, it seems, one of the most successful collaborative efforts between firefighters, fire departments, cities, and the communities. So, and that just means everything gets done better. And you've done a lot to that, and that's, it's actually a very good looking at how do we, how do we work on other types of issues like this together? So that we're not just each city doing something or each department's doing something, we work together. And you have great kudos for that. And it's obviously something that's helped save lives. So that's very, very great. So I think, you know, we, on this council, we can get together all, you know, a lot of cases, but sometimes we don't. But this is one where it's just as solid as can be, where all seven of us are behind it. And I think Councilmember Janice Azan hasn't said anything yet, but I'm sure that's in the same. So appreciate very much, and I think the comments of looking further from the deputy mayor, how do we increase that and how can we work with you to increase that? Again, this is something that, when you do something successful like this, the people working with it, and new people coming on councils, new people coming in, firefighters, are going to be doing better work because they have this behind them. So congratulations and nice, really glad to hear you come here and talk with us and just keep it up.
Thank you. Councilmembers, on, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you. You know, I echo my colleagues' comments. Our EMS is first-rate and saves lives every day, so I very much support this as well. And thank you, Mayor, for being part of the committee to work on the levy. I had the opportunity last year to be part of Fire Ops 101, and one of the stations was related to EMS and really seeing firsthand the conditions that they have to work under and making sure that our folks continue to be well-trained and have the tools that they need to be successful. I appreciate my colleagues talking about data and metrics. I know that in our annual report, the data is in there. What I'm wondering is, as you think about then continuous improvement in tools that you need, you know, better understanding what are some barriers to the response time and being able to be even more efficient and effective. So, thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table that's been seconded to put this on the ballot. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, and that passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to take a break till 20 after.
We're gonna take a break till 20 after. City manager, would you like to introduce our second of two study session items?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is an update on King County Metro's Rapid Ride K Line. And they are going to present some data that relates to the proposed candidate speed and reliability improvements for the K Line. They'll also share some feedback from their latest round of open houses and tabling events that was a part of their Phase Three community engagement. This is informational, but lots of opportunity for council to ask questions. For the Transportation Department, we have Andrew Singalakis, our director, and Olivia Akila, our senior engineer. And then King County Metro, we have representatives both on screen and at the table. And at the table, we have Yuvia Ellison Morales. And with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Andrew, and he can introduce the remainder of the metro staff. Andrew?
Well, thank you, City Manager Carlson, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Malakutian, and city council members. And I wanted to reiterate that the Rapid K Line project is aligned with council priorities. And this includes the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Update, the Transit Master Plan, the Mobility Implementation Plan, among others. Back in June of 2024, the council adopted the Rapid Ride K Line Guiding Principles, which acknowledged the policy basis for the investment. And this was reaffirmed when we met in the study session back in November. Council made it clear that transit speed and reliability were priorities for Bellevue. And tonight, Metro will provide an update on the project, including detailed information about the proposed speed and reliability improvements. And we'll be back again at the end of March to be the final time that we come back for the sign off on the locally approved alternative for the project. And with that, I will turn it over to Ryan.
Awesome. Thank you, Andrew. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Bellevue Council, thank you for having us here tonight to provide an update on the Rapid Ride K Line. And thank you for letting myself and Amanda attend virtually for the presentation. My name's Ryan Whitney, and I'm acting as the line lead for the K Line project for King County Metro. And then, Yuvia?
Hi, my name is Yuvia Ellison Morales. I'm the Senior Community Engagement Planner for this project.
And I'm Amanda Plon Brown. I do government relations, working with all 39 jurisdictions.
Thanks. We advance to the next slide, please. Thank you. So as stated, we're here to provide an update on the Rapid Ride K Line, but that will also include a highlight on why King County prefers to invest in Rapid Ride projects. We will go through an overview of our project schedule. Then Yuvia will provide an update on our community engagement Phase Three and other community engagement activities. Will then come back to me to provide a recap of our November meeting and the action items we left that meeting with, and how that led to the information we're presenting here today. Then highlight some of our access to transit improvements, speed and reliability improvements, which will be outlined in the locally preferred alternative. And then more details on our proposed bat lane analysis, and then closing with a summary and next steps. This presentation is information only, and it is preparing the council for when we return in March to request a letter of support for the locally preferred alternative of the Rapid Ride K Line. Why invest in Rapid Ride? Rapid Ride is Metro's largest investment for service. And as you can see from the map here on the screen, we have a large existing Rapid Ride network shown in the routes outlined in red. The A through F lines are legacy lines, and then we recently launched the H line and the G line, both of which are overperforming the ridership of the routes they replaced, showing that when we bring forth a Rapid Ride investment and invest in things like station amenities, access to transit, and speed and reliability projects, we see a response in ridership and enthusiasm for that route. The K line specifically will be the second Rapid Ride route on the east side, joining the Rapid Ride B line, which serves Bellevue and Redmond. It is a 16 mile route with 35 station pairs. Our Rapid Ride service will provide frequent service every 10 to 15 minutes when running. It's placed strategically to connect to other regional transit connections. This one will connect to the Stride I405 BRT project, as well as the Sound Transit Link 2 Light Rail. These projects, due to their scale and complexity, are eligible for federal funding. And they're also placed such that we connect key activity centers, employment, housing, and other amenities and places that generate ridership. Update on our project schedule, as Yuvia will cover next, we are in the middle of community engagement Phase Three. That ends this Thursday. In March, as I mentioned, we will return to request a letter of support for the locally preferred alternative from Bellevue Council. We will be revising our project vision and then transmitting that to King County Council in May, and hoping for them to adopt that in June. With adoption of the locally preferred alternative, we can then submit for our small starts grant application, which is a federal funding match of 50% of project costs. And later in fall 2025, we will begin preliminary design, which is when we'll further develop some of these alternatives and improvement concepts that I'll discuss here today. We will also begin our NEPA environmental process, that'll begin early this year, and then we're hoping for approval of that in spring 2026, summer 2026. And the timeline below shows other major milestones on our way through design, construction, and then hopefully revenue service in 2030. And with that, I will turn it over to Yuvia. Yuvia?
Thanks, Ryan. So this just kind of zooms into the planning phase, and specifically where we are in the community engagement, which is the final concept. So in this final concept, this is where we have been going out with community, getting input on what is referred to as the project vision. We want to confirm that this meets the values. And it's also important to note that this project vision is something that has carried over from last summer, which is when we were out with community getting input. Some of the ways in which community was able to help create this current project vision was by helping us look at routing choices in downtown Bellevue. It was also with bus station locations, as well as identifying what are barriers that exist for folks when they're trying to access transit. And also just kind of noting that Metro has been intentional about working with community from the very beginning, and so that also included the needs assessment phase. So as Ryan mentioned, right now, we are fully active in our community engagement. We have an online survey that launched on January 16th, and it closes at midnight this February 13th. That's a four week community engagement phase. It's available in multiple languages. We have been doing briefings and open houses. The difference between those two is that the open house is, it's published on our website, it's for the general public, it's both virtual and in person. And the briefings have really been more of a way for community to invite us to their spaces, really being interested and keen to learn more about this project. And so that, we've had about 14. We've also been out in public doing tabling, street teaming, hosting virtual office hours, and then obviously being responding to emails and phone. And the aim of all this outreach, as you would know, is really just to make sure that we are creating that curiosity, that we are able to answer questions, that we're able to motivate folks to come and visit our website, where they can in fact learn more about the project and then access the survey, or if not, at least be able to contact us, you know, with further questions. I'll pass it back to Ryan.
Awesome. Thank you, Yuvia. Recap from when we presented in November. We gave an update on the project vision and schedule, shared some of the key feedback we heard from community engagement Phase Two, and how that shaped some of our project decisions, most notably our confirmed routing decision in downtown Bellevue. And the reason the routing decision was so important to confirm is it allowed us to establish our entire route, which then lets us begin things like our NEPA environmental process, finalize our ridership projections, and also our calculations around travel time and route time savings. We also introduced some speed and reliability projects and considerations going into those, where council asked us to go back, do some more analysis, and come back with further information, digging into the weeds a little bit on some of that analysis we did in downtown Bellevue specifically. Next slide, please. Also included in the locally preferred alternative is our access to transit improvements. These are projects that will help people access the transit stations. It's how people walk, bike, and roll to the stations. They can include sidewalk projects, bike lanes, shared use paths, and enhanced crossing treatments. Some of the investment areas are highlighted here on the map to the right. And these show areas where we're looking at these types of projects. We will carry most of them through design of 30%. And then we will look to fit these into the project budget. I also do want to note, this does not account for small sidewalk projects, ramps, or bike accommodations at transit stations. If there's a bike facility where we're putting a station, we accommodate that bike facility in the station design, and it's not considered a separate access to transit improvement, it's part of that station investment. We will also outline in the locally preferred alternative, our suite of speed and reliability improvements. We have 26 proposed projects across both Kirkland and Bellevue. This includes bat lanes, transit signal priority, and also some areas where we're looking at intersection improvements to improve operations of not just the intersection, but how transit will interact with that intersection. Some of these investment areas outside of downtown Bellevue include improvements to 116th Avenue and Northup Way, as well as improvements down south at 145th Place Southeast and Southeast 24th Street. Types of speed and reliability treatments we consider for this project. The most exclusive type of transit priority we can provide is a bus only lane. These, as the name suggests, are lanes that are only for transit use. However, I will note, they can be used by emergency vehicles. This represents less than 1% of the corridor. So on the 16 mile corridor, less than 1% of it is being recommended as bus only lanes, and none of those lanes are actually in the city of Bellevue. The other treatment we can use are business access and transit lanes or bat lanes. These provide some transit priority, but also still allow right turning vehicles. These are great treatments for areas where there's a lot of driveways, side streets, or a high volume of right turning vehicles. This currently represents about 15% of the 16 mile corridor. The other 84% of the corridor is just recommending no transit priority, so buses will share the space with general purpose vehicles. Proposed bat lane analysis, we looked at the bat lane projects within downtown Bellevue, of which we were recommending 11, and they are shown here on this map. We shared this map in November. It's the same map with the same extents proposed for bat lane projects. We analyzed these in the 2044 Evening Peak Travel Period Analysis. We got those underlying travel volume, or traffic volumes from Bellevue staff, from the travel demand model. We assessed transit travel time both on the K line route and impacts to general purpose traffic. Not just general purpose traffic traveling on the same route as K line, but also the parallel streets within the downtown grid and how those were impacted. Next slide, please. What we found when we did this analysis was basically the impacts to general purpose traffic fell into one of three categories. Some corridors actually saw a reduction in travel time ranging between 10 seconds to one minute. The reason for this would be the bat lanes sometimes allowing right turning vehicles to have their own space, so they're not deterring the travel of vehicles that are trying to turn left or just trying to continue straight through an intersection. So that separation of general purpose traffic sometimes leads to a mutual benefit for both transit and general purpose traffic. We also saw some corridors that observed impacts of increased travel time. This was usually around 18 seconds or less, so there were some parallel routes that saw an increase in travel time for general purpose vehicles. There were two streets, though, that stood out, Northeast 12th Street and Northeast 8th Street. Both observed eastbound travel time increases of 54 seconds and 90 seconds respectively. Seeing how our bat lane analysis impacted our transit travel time, we, with the implementation of bat lanes, we saw savings of seven minutes of travel time for the K line. This includes both northbound travel and southbound travel collectively saving seven minutes in downtown Bellevue. We also looked at the number of buses traveling through downtown Bellevue. The specific point we looked at was on northeast 10th Street around 112th. And basically, looking at a point analysis, how many single occupancy vehicles are traveling through that point? And how many buses are traveling through that point? The buses represented 2% of travel through that, so for every 100 vehicles passing through that point, there were two buses and 98 single occupancy vehicles. But when you look at a person throughput analysis of that, the single occupancy vehicles were carrying 55, or 55% of the people, and then the buses were carrying either 27%, if you consider the current ridership projections for K line. But if the buses were full, they'd be carrying 45% of the people through that point. So almost half the people could be carried in a single transit lane by two buses per 100 vehicles. How the speed and reliability translates for the entire K line route, if we consider all 26 projects currently recommended for speed and reliability, this includes queue jumps, transit signal priority, as well as projects like bat lanes, we're actually saving 26 and a half minutes for southbound travel. That's to drive the entire route from Totem Lake down to East Gate. And then the northbound direction, we're saving about 20 and a half minutes, so traveling from East Gate to Totem Lake. And what these time savings give us is it's not only savings experienced by the passengers on the bus, traveling from destinations along the corridor, or from passengers waiting for the bus outside of those destinations, perhaps someone waiting north of downtown Bellevue. They know their bus won't be delayed in downtown Bellevue because of these speed and reliability improvements, so it'll reach them on time, get them to their destination on time. But also, these time savings are cumulative for every time the bus runs the route, which if we're running 10 minute headways, that's six buses per hour. And then these time savings translate to very real annual savings for Metro, which can total about a million dollars in savings per year for Metro. And that's based on our revenue service operating hour, which we estimate every year. Next steps for the project, as Yuvia mentioned, we are closing out our Phase Three community engagement. The survey is live right now, so please encourage everyone to visit the website, take the survey before midnight on February 13th. As mentioned, we will be back to present to Bellevue Council again, and actually request a letter of support for the project vision or locally preferred alternative. And then in June, we hope to have this locally preferred alternative adopted by King County Council, which will then allow us to move forward with our FTA Small Starts Grant application. And with that, our team is available to answer your questions. Thank you.
Great, that's a very good presentation. Thank you. Councilmember Azan, let's start with you, since you're gonna be our hero for transportation representing Bellevue.
Yes, absolutely. Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the presentation. I love this project, because the one piece that I thought about the most was how much more funds we need to support our transportation infrastructure. So the fact that, once this is in place, that there is a savings of a million dollars a year in operations, in addition to being able to get people the speed and reliability to get where they need to go, is tremendous. And this will only be the second bus rapid transit line or Rapid Ride on the east side. So I really appreciate being able to create this connectivity. As you said, it's a connector for jobs, housing, and activity centers, as well as for our community members that are using the different human services that they will be visiting. So having that will be really important. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. When you talk about travel time savings as well as delays, is that along the corridor? So those, those improvements and potentially delays is not in a single block? It's, is it a corridor of measure? Could you help me understand that?
Yeah, of course. So when we look at our, for transit time savings, when we look at those projects, we're looking at both the travel time from point A to B, and then the kind of isolated delay or benefit at individual intersections. So if we're talking about a specific intersection, we might say transit can save 15 seconds traveling through this intersection with this treatment. But if we're considering improvements from, for example, when I talk about the downtown Bellevue projects collectively, we're really looking at travel from approximately Main Street and, I believe, 116th to then Northeast 10th Street and 116th. So then we're considering the segment times, savings on each of those segments. So Main Street, north, or Northeast 110th, and then North, or 110th Avenue and Northeast 10th Street. So those segments, as well as the savings from each signalized intersection that the bus passes through. So we talk about them from both intersection savings and the segments.
Great, thank you. And then my only other question is, I know at one point we had talked about the potential for employer shuttles to be able to use that bus lane, and maybe only at certain times or whatnot. Can you give me a sense for what the thoughts are about that?
Of course. Thank you for the question, Councilmembers Zahn. So at this point in our evaluation, the state law does not permit private employer shuttles in bat lanes, um, but we're going to continue to monitor for changes.
Well, so this is where, um, I'm in the legislature now, so, uh, certainly getting that bill dropped would be important. I really want to understand, though, whether that is something that Metro is entertaining, so that as we look holistically at the system, we're actually able to, um, move people, uh, more quickly, both on buses and potentially employer shuttles as well.
Of course. Thank you for the follow-up. So I will note that we don't really have a way to, um, to understand how private employer shuttles and bat lanes would actually impact our service. So I think that's the first and primary, um, consideration. So as you're thinking about that, please do, uh, think about how it is that we need to measure, what the impact of that would be. And then we're certainly continue to be open to conversations, especially once we understand what that would mean to our service.
Yeah, I think that, you know, certainly we could look at providing that, uh, change at the state level potentially, so that, uh, Metro can work with the employer shuttles to enable this type of, um, collaboration. And certainly, that study, that's going to be pretty important. And it looks like we do have a little bit of time, because service won't start until twenty thirty. Is that correct?
That is our currently planned service, yes.
Great, thank you. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Noonhouse.
Thank you, Mayor. Great presentation.
Thank you so much, and I'm going to, uh, just add on to, uh, Councilmember Zahn's comments. Um, if appropriately, I'd love to add to our, uh, next ledge agenda, that we make that a priority to add, um, that we would like to see a change, um, and allow for employer shuttles, uh, to, uh, to be able to make use of the, of the bat lanes. I think that, um, I think there's some mutual, um, and I think my colleagues here on the council, uh, would have, uh, interest in that as well, as we try. And I know our employers, especially our major employers here in Bellevue, would have an interest in that as well. Um, love slide ten. Um, you know, I think this really comes down to, um, a couple of key things, and that's the speed and reliability. So that slide is, it really speaks to me. But I also think this is about ridership and, and, and mitigation, uh, quite a bit as well. Have a couple of different questions covering different areas. Uh, one is, and I discussed this with, um, our Director of Transportation, is that, um, Main Street is like a, uh, an important bike corridor for us. Um, and, um, there's that one section there on Main between one hundred and twelfth and one hundred and tenth, where there is a bike lane there. Um, what would happen, or what, how could we mitigate the impact to that bike lane to make sure that we still have a bike lane and it won't be, uh, removed? That's my, my first question. I'll go ahead and let you answer that one.
Yeah, uh, thanks for asking the question, Councilmember Noonhouse. Uh, so currently, the plan for bike facilities on long Main Street, um, is all set at the back of the curb. Um, so currently, the existing bike facility, that's between one twelfth and one tenth there in the westbound direction.
Right.
Um, there would not be any impact to that as part of the K-line project. Um, and then similar to what Ryan mentioned earlier, if a station is planned along Main Street, uh, there's a plan to accommodate existing bike, bicycle facilities.
Terrific. Uh, that's great to hear. Uh, next question I had regarding, um, uh, the technical analysis, as what was mentioned, I believe, on slide thirteen, I'm curious about, um, what the city, um, what we've done in terms of a comprehensive technical analysis, because as it shows on one hundred and twelfth, um, north, the, the corner, northeast Eighth and northeast Twelfth will be impacted. Um, and I know Metro is aware of that and is, uh, admitting that. So I'm curious about what kind of mitigation, um, steps or options will we have to lessen, uh, that, that impact to congestion?
After the locally preferred alternative is selected, and we have, you know, know exactly what the speed and reliability improvements are, we'll start from there, and we'll do traffic modeling and take a look at other programs that we already have in place, and to see whether or not there are things that we could add into our TFP, if necessary, to try to, um, ameliorate the impacts, um, associated with it. So we haven't done the study yet, but we will do it.
Okay. So the mitigation then comes on, just if I understand this correctly, w- will be on the city, not necessarily on Metro, where we work in partnership with them to mitigate? How does that work exactly?
That's a good question for, uh, Metro.
Yes, so when Metro launches a service, we are committed to having that service operate as anticipated, and we also want the network to not be negatively in, impacted by that. So we continually monitor that service. Um, I will note, for, for some of these, we look at kind of analysis on a horizon year of twenty thirty-five for a lot of these, and then for this, we've also extended analysis to twenty forty-four. So it's something that we monitor, and we, we know that that potential issue could be on the horizon. Um, and we kind of monitor year by year what it's looking like as we approach it. Another, another point to note about kind of one of the restrictions of the modeling is we are able to anticipate traffic growth, but we're not able to make assumptions or anticipation for new mode decisions. So we can't, for example, say, oh, in the future, ten percent more people will take the bus because the service is there. Um, there's methodologies for anticipating traffic growth, but not traffic mode choice. So we're kind of in a very worst-case scenario conservative model when we do this analysis. So in reality, we would hope that people would also make a, a mode choice to take transit, so perhaps the transit service could be part of the solution for improving operations.
Okay. I, I think we went to a different, um, uh, area there, but that's good, because that's where it's going to go next. But I, I guess, on page, on, on, on page six, for me, I'd just like, when this comes back, um, like to see a little, just a little more, um, specifics in terms of how we're going to mitigate, um, uh, issues, uh, if they, well, we know that already it's going to be, um, uh, an issue, but an issue that I think that we can, uh, address and, uh, again, uh, mitigate. Um, then my other question was going to be around, um, optimizing throughput. Um, and, um, I, I know you've addressed some of this already, but just curious in terms of the throughput, what we can learn, because there's been one other rapid ride on the east side, correct? So what did we learn there in regards to throughput and, 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 and what we might be able to expect with, with the K-line?
The, the Rapid Ride B-line, I believe is the other, uh, east side Rapid Ride service you're referring to, and it was launched, it's one of our legacy lines, being the Rapid Ride B-line. It was our second Rapid Ride line that we launched, I believe, back in two thousand nine or two thousand ten. I would have to look back on kind of how we've monitored that service throughout the last few years and get back to you on lessons learned with that one, or areas where we can find improvement for that.
Okay. Well, I'm glad we're doing, uh, the monitoring, but that'd be great if you could bring that back, uh, next time. Love to know what, uh, we can learn from that, as well as what we can see in terms of adoption of ridership, et cetera, that, uh, to me, I'd be very interested in hearing that. So thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
Well, I, I should, uh, follow up on Councilmember Noonhouse, uh, his questions on this. And, uh, and appreciate his, his, uh, looking into, into the transportation, uh, pretty, pretty, uh, pretty well. So it's, it, what I, what I like about, and we can talk about the backs and forth on this, and it's a very complex situation, but I do find that you've really increased the, the work on this, and you're getting, uh, you know, as you go forward, you're moving forward and not getting, getting off to the sides or anything. And it's, uh, what is fascinating is, it's a complex piece, and it takes so long, and things change, and, and, you know, what we have this year is not what we have another year and all that. But again, it seems like, um, we're keeping on track on that, and that's difficult, but you're, you're doing that, and I appreciate that. Uh, I think that, um, what we, uh, what we really need to do is continue to have, um, work on this in a, in the way you're doing it, and also getting out to the public and getting the public more involved, so they know what's going to come, and they, and find ways to really increase their, uh, interest in riding, uh, buses and, and other things. And, um, so I think that's, we're on a good track on that. Uh, this, this is a very complex piece, and I think you're addressing it, and it's going to be a lot of conversations coming back. I do appreciate also, and I think it's changed to such an extent, now that you've been working on it more, our, the conversations are a lot more detailed, a lot more, I think, back and forth, and, and coming, you know, looking at the work you've been doing. Now we have a lot more ability to talk about what we're, you know, how it's going, how we're making it, um, fit into what's happening in Bellevue. And the other factor, of course, which, um, you, you have to work with, is that changes are coming fast in Bellevue and the area. And that's always something that makes it difficult. And, uh, you know, the streets we're talking about, they were great five years ago, and now they're just really full. So it's, uh, it's a real, uh, challenge to it, but I do appreciate the work that's being done. And again, it's, it's very complex, and my colleagues have some very good questions about this, but I just want to, um, continue to see that we, we have the conversation together, and that you really focus on this, and that when you come and talk to us, you're talking about something that you know you're working on, it's not just something that, well, we're gonna, we, we think we're going to do this, and I appreciate that, because sometimes, like, we, on these big projects, that happens. And, uh, I do appreciate the way that you bring this forward and say, well, this is something we're working on, and we're not quite sure on that, but we're working on this thing. So I just think it's a huge step, and just keep it up.
Great, thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Yes, tha- thank you, Mayor. Uh, great job. Thank you so much, uh, for the presentation. Mr. Whitney, uh, Mrs. Brown, Mrs. Morales, Andrew Olivia, thank you. I have two, uh, small question. One is on a slide thirteen. If you can go back, I just don't know, I just wanted to know the clarification of that seven-minute saving, uh, in the downtown of Bellevue, uh, maybe one, maybe it's slide fourteen, yeah? So between which two points, and then compared to what other way of transportation you drive that seven minutes?
Yes. Um, could I request maybe, maybe jump back two more slides? Yes, so this map will help the clarification on that. So traveling from, um, one sixteenth and Main Street, so the point where the, the bus traveling up, uh, one sixteenth street, either takes a left onto Main Street, or, or we'll, we'll go that direction. So takes a left there. So it's basically traveling on Main Street, um, and this is the, the Rapid Ride K-line, so the bus traveling on Main Street from that intersection of Main Street and one sixteen, traveling westbound, then turning right, traveling northbound of one tenth Avenue Northeast, taking a right on northeast Tenth Street, and then taking a left on northeast Tenth Street and one sixteenth Avenue, up to then that point where there's a white dot, and it says northeast Twelfth Street and one sixteenth Avenue Northeast. So those are the points, and we're saying seven minutes of travel time is saved between, um, if a bus were to travel from that point to the south, to the point to the north, uh, with no transit priority, so no bat lane improvements. It's just traveling in the lane with general-purpose vehicles, other buses, everybody else. Um, then if we implement the bat lane projects, as shown in the yellow lines there on Main Street, the area of one tenth Avenue, the areas of northeast Tenth Street, and then that northbound bat lane on one sixteenth Avenue, we can reduce that travel time by seven minutes.
That's awesome. Thank you. That's very helpful. Uh, I wanted to echo the employee, sh- sh- employer shuttle. I think that's very important for us, so whatever you can do, uh, Councilmember Zahn, in your other capacity, please help. Uh, I have the one, I think Councilmember Noonhouse was asking this, and I'm not sure if he was asking this, but I am asking this, and hopefully that's a follow-up of his question. We for sure know, based on your analysis, there are going to be negative impact in two streets, uh, forty-five seconds, ninety seconds. What is our mitigation plan? And I understand that you are saying that should be further after everything happens, because we don't know, but who is going to be in charge of paying for that? I think maybe that was, Mr., uh, Councilmember Noonhouse was asking, and I didn't get that answer in Ryan's response. Is it the city of Bellevue responsible? Is it Metro responsible? Is it a co-responsibility collaboratively? Uh, because we are doing a lot of improvement, we are doing sidewalk improvement. I think that's by Metro, we are doing, uh, other improvements that is in the plan. Why not the mitigation of those two streets that negatively is going to be impacted by this, is going to be part of the improvement plan? At least the budget allocated for that is part of the improvement plan.
Again, I, I would leave, need to leave that one to Metro to answer the question. However, going ahead with a project like this, and we're constantly monitoring intersections through our planning process, that if there were, um, places that needed to have some sort of improvement, I can't tell you what it is right now, because we haven't looked at it, and we, um, have, um, committed to do the more in-depth traffic analysis for it. But it could be signal, um, you know, changes to the, uh, the way the signals are, um, operating, or it could be additional capacity, smaller capacity improvements. I'm not sure the extent to which, the amount of funding that Metro will get and what that means, but we're not going to let the, um, transportation system, uh, not go un, to go unmitigated.
Ryan, do you want to add anything to that answer?
Um, the only, the only thing I would add to the answer is, I, I am fairly confident that parallel route roadway improvements could not be included in a federally funded part of the project, because there are guidelines around what FTA will fund, and FTA funds transit projects and transit improvements, so they need to feel like their federal dollars are going directly to, um, a transit service, um, not necessarily other roadway improvements. But if there were other roadway improvements that were needed, such as maybe safety improvements or parallel route improvements, there might be other grant programs that are more suited to funds for general transportation projects that could be, could be sought, and, uh, Metro could support the city in going after some of those grant funding projects, but it would not be funding associated with the FTA Small Starts Grant Fund, as those funds are mostly earmarked and need to be allocated towards specific tran- uh, transit improvements.
Thank you. That's a great answer. Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, Deputy Mayor, um, this is just the beginning of our partnership on this work, so this project will entail many, many more conversations and partnership with our leadership, with your leadership, and with you at council. So this is not the end.
Thank you. And my last question is, uh, assume twenty thirty came, and we did everything perfectly, did the construction, then we did some monitoring, and we realized that ninety seconds is now five minutes. What are we going to do? And I'm throwing an example, just wanted to know, if we go, because we are doing some modeling, and as an engineer, I know not all of our modeling is going to be pan out. So in your previous lines, line A, B, C, D, E, F, K, that, has it happened that you monit-, you planned for something, your model said negative forty seconds, and then you are, I think, line A has been done since twenty ten, so I think you have some data for that. What is going to happen if our model is not correct, and the, the negative impact in those traffic is much, uh, more than what we anticipated?
I'm going to throw that one over to Ryan.
Yeah, that's fair. I can say, I've, I've looked at a, um, number of before-after studies for other BRX projects, and I've not seen any that highlight a detrimental impact to general purpose traffic, such as that, a, you know, fifty-second delay turning into a five-minute delay. Usually, the before-after studies focus on the transit service, and they usually highlight things that, you know, ridership was projected to be four thousand, and then was actually recognized as five thousand, or transit travel time was projected to be thirty minutes and is actually operating at twenty-eight minutes. So usually, the before-after studies that I've read, um, focus more on the impacts of the actual transit service. Um, I could check back at Metro with our line leads from the recently-launched H-line and G-line, and see if the operation of those, since H-line's been in service for, I think, about, um, a year, maybe almost two years, and G-line since, I believe, September, and see if we've noticed any, um, system-wide negative impacts to general purpose traffic, and if we're doing anything, working with our jurisdictional partners on those projects to mitigate those, if issues have been identified.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Councilmember Hamilton.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you for the presentation. Thrilled that, uh, King County Metro is bringing this critical transportation infrastructure project to Bellevue. project to Bellevue. I know we've gotten a lot of great input from community members that has helped improve the plan for the K-line. Certainly appreciate all the work that Andrew and his team have done. Lacey Jane, who's here, has also helped support the project, and very effectively. And, again, King County Metro and your team, just really, really well done. Obviously, transportation infrastructure, as my colleagues have talked about, is really critical for the city, and especially as we continue to grow. And I know Councilmember Zahn mentioned connections to regional transit are critically important. Certainly agree with that and appreciate how the K-line's going to play a role in that effort. I think, you know, looking at Bellevue and considering the commuting and the fact that we import about 90% of our labor, we really do have to take steps like the K-line to make it more affordable and easier for workers to get to and from Bellevue. Beyond that, the crosstown trips are going to be easier and more reliable with the K-line. Connecting East Gate to downtown and points north is critical, as the East Gate neighborhood goes through a revitalization process. I know that we're going to continue to work with stakeholders as the K-line is built out, and I think we're hearing that expressed as a priority. Also, working with property owners and community members to maximize the benefits of the K-line as it comes to life. Appreciate that, as has been mentioned, our transportation staff is going to conduct these studies, continue to monitor the K-line, and look for ways to mitigate any performance targets that are negatively impacted. Also appreciate the staff engaging with King County Metro in supporting the feasibility of changing state law to allow employer shuttles to use the Bat Lanes, that's been talked about quite a bit, but I share that as a priority. You know, I think when we look at the Bat Lanes, it really is more about increasing person throughput overall is the goal, and really shouldn't matter who owns the Bat Lanes. I think having business shuttles in makes a lot of sense. It basically achieves the same purpose in getting buses out of general-purpose lanes. So, and as Councilmember Newenhouse mentioned, I think the city finding ways to support a change in the law to allow employer shuttles in the Bat Lanes is a good idea. So, I know we have some more engagement, folks have a little bit of time left to be involved in that process, hope they'll do that. Look forward to the final report back. And just very supportive overall of the K-line, I think barring any surprises, look forward to finalizing our letter in support of the locally preferred alternative in March. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Lee.
I appreciate your presentation, which is very good. And also, I think it's important to have a new way of, you know, improving our transportation system. And I think the Rapid Ride system has proven itself to be another way of improving the whole transit system that we have. But I do agree with the Deputy Mayor especially, when we already have quite a bit of experience. We know how K-line has, well, we're gonna design K-line, but we have B-line that's running Bellevue, and we have other lines that we've implemented, you know, recently. So, I think we need to be learning from those lines, those systems. We need to have lessons learned. We need to know how to figure out, you know, what to do, what not to do. And I'm kind of surprised that we don't have that. And the city of Bellevue should also know, because, I mean, we are right in the middle of it, and especially ultimately, we may have to pay for it. And even if we don't pay for it, we need to be able to know from Metro how we can support you in making it. You mentioned that you can support us, but, you know, we can put the table to you. How do we support you, right? I mean, this is a holistic problem that we need to solve holistically. Either way, we gotta make it work. So, I think that's important, that we make sure that the questions are being asked, very good questions, but I think we need to have some answers before we just say, "Well, we have benefits, just let's do it." But then, we don't know what, you know, disadvantage might come up, what problem can present itself. You know, I mean, that, I think it's sort of short-sighted. So, I would really like to push on, using the experience we've gained, using our own experience at B-line Bellevue, what has worked, and I think in general, people like it. So, what it is, and in general, there may be some feedbacks. And so, we need to know all that stuff. So, I have confidence that, you know, we brought it up by City Council here in Bellevue. I hope that Metro would take it seriously, and I hope our staff would, you know, take that into serious consideration to make sure that we know what we're looking at. But I do have a final question, which is, I noticed on your chart, the line would only go to Park and Ride East Gate. It doesn't catch the Factoria traffic. Factoria, as we know, it's developing pretty commercially, you know, in something that's pretty, and also residentially, there's a big population south of Bellevue. So, I wonder how do we think, I'm gonna include this as both Bellevue and Metro, because we're all used together. How do we catch that population by utilizing the K-line to get over to the other part in downtown Bellevue, then use the B-line to go elsewhere and other places in the future? So, I think that's a big question for me. We have advantage, we have opportunity to do something there. It's the, you know, supply line to a system that can expand and can serve the community south of Bellevue. So, if you can say a few words, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm happy to take that one as well. So, most of the route, including terminating at East Gate down south and Totem Lake up north, a lot of those routing decisions were made in, I believe, 2019. And routing decisions, especially around where we terminate routes in, like, the south and north terminus, are based on also considerations for layover space and space where our operators can take a break, hopefully use the restroom, things like that, because we have, you know, our operators are on the front line, they're working very hard for us, and they're what make our system go, so we want to be able to give them some breaks. So, we try to plan these routes and the terminus of them to have appropriate layover space for our operators. And a larger part that we weren't able to touch on a lot here today, but when we're launching a service as optimistic as a Rapid Ride K-line, we also go through a restructure process, and we're going to look at all the existing transit routes in the area, and how can those routes complement the K-line service that we're launching. So, while it might not be the K-line specifically that serves those people further south, we are terminating the route there at a park-and-ride station, so folks can drive there, park their vehicles, and then ride transit, or perhaps there's another transit route that also lays over at that East Gate park-and-ride, and they can hopefully make a nice, quick, easy transfer with our 10-to-15-minute frequent Rapid Ride K-service, and then jump on the bus to where they need to go. So, it's sometimes not just what K-line can do, but what we can restructure the larger system to be able to do.
I hope you, good, I'm glad you're looking at that, but I think my point of view is, people go to Factoria. I mean, they're not all going to be waiting for a bus to take them to the park-and-ride. I mean, if you provide a service there, they already are going there, either, we encourage not driving, maybe they can, people are walking now, right? They can walk in the neighborhood, they can do, use other means to get there, maybe carpool and whatnot. But once they are there, it'd be good that they can be somehow conveniently get onto a public transit, you know, to move around, it's easier, instead of getting in the car and drive into the park-and-ride. You know, why go to park-and-ride, they must have driven all the way into Bellevue downtown. I mean, this, I'm just saying that, let's take a look at the optimal solutions, rather than, well, maybe we can piecemeal, maybe, maybe, right? So, we have opportunity to do that, that's what I'm proposing. If you can extend that further, that would be, I think, a big service for the people, you know, south of Bellevue. Thank you.
Great. So, my only comment would be to Genesee. We've heard from a majority of council members that are interested in making this part of our legislative agenda. How can we do that? I know that the timeline is quick, but we have a hotline to Representative Zahn now. So, can you answer that for us?
Absolutely, Mayor. We have already been in consistent conversation with proponents around this legislation and offered our support. Time is always moving very quickly in Olympia, but we are engaged with the proponents and trying to see if there's a there there for this session.
Okay, great. That sounds good. I see Councilmember Zahn, did you want to comment on this?
Yeah, I do. Actually, I have been working on something to drop this legislative session, if we can actually come to some agreement with Metro that this is something that makes sense for them as well. So.
Okay, we got Metro in the room, hopefully.
And just, folks know, we're not talking about something where Metro would absolutely be in the driver's seat, but really removing the state prohibition so that the collaboration and discussion can actually happen without that as a barrier at the state level. Thanks.
Yep, got it. Did you want to add something?
Yeah, good evening. My name is Christina O'Clare, and I'm the Mobility Division Director at King County Metro. I appreciate listening in today, and I appreciate hearing all the different comments on the Rapid Ride, and your interest in mobility in the region. I do want to thank the partnership with Bellevue and the work that we're doing together with the community. I'm here to talk a little bit about the conversation about the bus, the employer shuttles and the Bat Lanes.
Sure.
I want to recognize that King County Metro realizes that there is an opportunity for us to look at maximizing our use of our right-of-way, and that how we move forward together, it's really important, that we take in consideration a couple of key aspects. In this, we really want to make sure we look at the safety and the operations of the roadway. I'm far from an expert in that, so I know there's a lot of traffic engineers and others. Some bus lanes make sense, and some, I'm just gonna use, like, Third Avenue downtown, don't make as much sense, based on the density, the usage, et cetera. So, really looking at somewhat of a tiered system is where Metro is very interested. The second thing I just want to state is that, as we look at this, we've had good conversations with some of the large employers, and most of those large employers already purchase and support public transit through our ORCA passport accounts, through their businesses, et cetera. So, really making sure that these employers see the value of public transit. It is a different service, because it is open to the public, and it is available for free for those who qualify for it. So, the employers we've talked to agree that that is an important aspect in really investing and supporting public transit for the region, but also for their employees, because they know, they don't want to be the employer shuttle, they want to actually have the majority of the people moving, using other modes of transportation, including public transit. So, that was another aspect. And then, the third piece of this is, as we're looking at it, I think we just want to be able to measure the data, it's much like the conversation you're having over here on mitigation. What happens when things change? How do we work through that? And so, as we're looking at it, we're very interested in building a permitting process or something through the jurisdiction, so that the jurisdiction actually is involved in understanding and maintaining the roadway, really looking at how the operations of the roadway, the safety of the roadway. That is the responsibility in most of these Bat Lanes of jurisdictions. So, how do we do that and really look at and think through that together? We are having very big conversations with City of Seattle, we had one yesterday, and I think they're very interested in modeling this after a program that they have on a shared bus stop program, what that looks like and how they're working together, that is very successful, and that many of the employers use and really can partner together. So, right now, I think King County Metro would like to understand the impacts to operations, to safety, and investment in public transit, and then really kind of a path forward on how we can work with the jurisdictions, in case something changes, in case, you know, whatever it might be, mode splits, how people are moving, what it might look like. I hope that helps. Of course, as Councilmember Zahn is saying, the legislature gets to make the choice. We'll be working with our King County Executive Office and others to understand what this, if this legislation moves forward, what it needs to look like.
Great, thank you so much, that was helpful. Okay, well, I think you are done. This is a good discussion, good information, and we'll look forward to the next installment. We have in our packet, the Intergovernmental Affairs Monthly Update, which is very good reading, thank you for that. And I wanted to mention that the Deputy Mayor and I spent a day in Olympia last Friday, and we met with all our representation in Olympia, including Councilmember Zahn, and, well, sort of. We got delayed by somebody and we had to meet with her on the run, but anyway, we had a lot of help from Genesee Atkins and Katie Halsey went down with us, and we met with our lobbyist, Brianna Murray. So, it's a very productive day, and we just very much value the partnerships that we have with our state representatives and senators, so, thanks for everybody who made that successful. I think we're at the end here.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could I add something underneath business?
Yes, you may.
Great, thank you. Well, I want to thank the Mayor and the deputy for coming down and visiting, and yes, we were literally walking and talking at the same time, and I have, I understand the priorities of the city and have been happy to represent you in Olympia. I did want to give you an update, because as I let you know at the last council meeting that I attended, that although, actually, what I learned is many state legislators do actually serve on dual roles on various elected positions, that as I had shared with you, that is not my intention. And after talking and working with Diane on the couple of policy items that I wanted to be on the City Council to comment on and vote, that my last council meeting will be March 25th, and finishing on the City Council on March 28th. So, I wanted to let you know that, so you can move forward with the appointment process, and just really appreciate your indulgence or your patience as I work through those couple of items with the city manager on when it was coming to the City Council, so that I was able to lend my voice on the council for those last bits of pieces. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for letting us know. So, that opens up the floodgates of a whole new process, which we're all excited to see how that turns out, and we're excited to support you in your new role. So, thank you for letting us know. There's no meeting next week, so we will be back here on February 25th, and with that, we are adjourned.